All right, it looks like it is now 6:30 and we have a full council in attendance. So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order for the record. This is a regular meeting of the city council and WPCA. Today is Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. Participating via Zoom, I have Councilman Frank Rubino, Councilwoman Anne Rowett, Councilwoman Sharon Wagner, Councilman Drake Waldron, Councilman David Oliver, and Councilman Paul Cavanero. With that said, and we are recording, I'm going to jump right into item number one on tonight's agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the public hearing held February 1st, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
So moved.
And seconded by Councilman Oliver. Questions on the minutes? Hearing none. I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I only heard two ayes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
Aye, aye, Captain. All right, so I'm moving into item number two. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, which was held on February 1st, 2021. I heard Councilman Oliver and Councilwoman Rowett.
You got us all now.
Any questions on those motions, on this motion? No. Get rid of something from my screen, I'm sorry. All right, if there are no questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held February 9th, 2021.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
Second.
And I heard Councilman Waldron. Questions on these minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item four. I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's reappointment of Mary Sabel as a regular member of the Cole Memorial Park Committee for a five-year term expiring on January 1st, 2026.
All moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
I'm sorry, was that seconded by Councilman Oliver?
No, I said.
Cavanero.
Oh, Cavanero, sorry, I looked away at my phone for a second. All right, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
Item five. I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's reappointment of David Morgan and Mark Travella as regular members of the zoning board of appeals for a five-year term expiring on December 2nd, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Rowett. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, item six. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the purchasing agent to enter into a contract for the following, for the following, if the price is no greater than 10% over the bid price on February 16th, 2021. So diesel fuel, number two, fuel oil, and gasoline. I see Penny is on the call. I don't know, Penny, if you have your microphone now. Um.
Yes, I do, Mayor.
Oh, good, okay. Um, I don't know, it doesn't have a price. It just says no greater than 10% over the bid price on February 16th. Do we have an update as to what those bid prices were?
Did Jonathan forward them on?
That's why I was looking at my phone. Did anybody get those?
Mayor, they're uploaded to the agenda under each of the fuel types.
Oh.
Has everybody had a chance to look at those?
I can just give you the prices if you would like.
That would be easier. I was just going, I was on a hunt for the agenda item. Yeah, if you don't mind, Penny.
Okay. Diesel came in at 1.923 per gallon. And we would be purchasing 57,100 plus or minus 5% being awarded to East River Energy of Guilford, Connecticut. Um, number two fuel. The cost is 2.2175 per gallon for 17,700 gallons, plus or minus 5%. That was awarded, being awarded to Dime Oil Company of Waterbury, Connecticut. And gasoline, the cost of 1.9407 per gallon. Purchased 119,000, plus or minus 5% gallons, awarded to Dime Oil Company of Waterbury, Connecticut.
Thank you very much, Penny. Um, so the, the motion. I did not get a motion from the floor. Do I have a motion to approve as read by? Thank you, Oliver.
Yep.
I'll start again.
And seconded by Frank Rubino, Councilman Rubino. All right, are there questions on this?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Governor.
Yeah, can anyone provide some detail as to why local providers didn't get any of these contracts?
That's good.
Just curious.
The bids are posted on the city and state websites. And unfortunately, usually we get three or four, if not more, bidders. And this time we only got two.
Is there an explanation for that?
Unfortunately, I don't have an explanation for that.
And to Councilman Cavanero's question, this is when we go out to bid on these, you know, for this. Historically, anybody who's bidding on these contracts is looking out for these. Anybody who's registered to receive notification of our bids receives notice as soon as the bid is put up on our website or posted. So, I mean, I would agree, but I don't know, Penny, I don't think that I've ever seen any of the local companies. Are you thinking like Patterson or, I don't know, yeah.
See, I don't.
Money Sticks in Torrington. There's a whole lot of, there's a whole lot of.
If I have doing this, I don't honestly, I've been doing this since 2007 and even my predecessor before me. I do not believe that there has been a local vendor bidding on any of these bids.
Yeah.
And I don't know why.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you're going to get an explanation, how would you just do? I'm not saying there's anything wrong. I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure the bid process is transparent. I'm just curious why our people can't make competitive bids here. I would just like an explanation, that's all.
You know what, it's, it's worth my doing a little outreach just to find out what.
Yeah, sorry. I'd reach out to Patterson and what other local vendors are there?
Yeah. I just think as a council, if anybody's paying attention to this, you know, it's likely we'll be asked questions about that and I would just like to have a ready answer as to, you know.
But all of this is done.
Not been able to keep this money in Torrington.
I know, I agree. Unfortunately, because this is a competitive bid process and it's guided by procurement, you know, it's not like we can throw this away and, you know, and start over again. We, we have.
I'm not asking for any of that, Mayor. I'm not asking for any of that.
Right, but we could definitely do some outreach to find out why they've never bid on this.
I will reach out to Patterson and ask, you know. Definitely reach out and I'll see if there's other local vendors.
Sure, just a boilerplate answer that we could, that council people can use. Thank you.
I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to item number seven. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city and enter into an owner's representative services agreement with Construction Solutions Group, LLC of East Hartford, Connecticut, for the construction of the new middle high school and central office administration to be located at 50 Major Best Drive.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Okay, I heard Councilman Cavanero. And I know, I see Ed Arum is on the line, as is Mario Longabuco, representing the building committee. I don't know if either of you had anything you wanted to add or if there were questions from the council members for our co-chairs.
Fortunately, Ms. Frank Rubino, I do have a couple of questions, that's all. I'll be abstaining from it, but I guess as a Torrington citizen, I just want to go over the project management fee with Ed and Mario.
Sure.
If they have an answer.
Yep, they just both unmuted, so I, go ahead if you want to start the question and either one of you.
Hi. Hi, Ed, it's Frank. Just question on your project management fee on your, on the contract here. It says phase, you broke it down into phases. As far as services, like one and two, I see that. Or an into phase two. Phase one, you broke into like a one and a two. What I didn't see on here, and maybe I'm missing it, and that's okay if I did, I just want to be corrected. During the FFNE process of the procurement of the furniture for the school, typically the owner's rep has a hand in it. Is that an added cost?
No, that's not an added cost, that was in the RFQ.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's part of their contract, that's all. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Rubino. Other questions?
Just can, I'm just curious, how many other contractors bid on the project?
Yeah, we, the RFQ went out on the DAS website and also the Waterbury Republican. We received five bidders. The committee reviewed the five and narrowed down to four for interviews. And we interviewed the four. We eliminated one of them after the interview and then the committee voted 11 to 1 to contract or have the agreement with Construction Solutions.
And was it the lowest bidder or was it just curious?
It was not the lowest bidder. The Colliers was at 868,700. Construction Solutions was 926,084. And Arcadius was 1,985,838. When we interviewed Construction Solutions, they were really the top of the tier for those three people, for those three groups. And that's why it was 11 to 1 vote.
Other questions for Mr. Arum? Great, seeing none, I will call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One exemption, myself, Rubino.
Councilman Rubino abstains.
Thank you, Ed.
No, thank you, and we'll be back with the architects and the construction managers agreement. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ed.
Have a great night, keep safe.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number eight. I will entertain a motion to schedule a virtual public hearing to begin at 6:30 PM on Monday, March 1st for the purpose of authorizing the city of Torrington to enter into a tax exemption agreement per CGS Section 7-498 for certain real property and improvements located at 100 Franklin Street, Torrington, Connecticut.
So moved.
Thank you, I heard Councilwoman Waldron. I heard Councilwoman Rowett. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Excellent, thank you. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to, just, well, it's a discussion and vote by the city council here in acting as water pollution control authority to consider the request of Mr. Norman J. Lalliberty to enter into a five-year installment plan payable monthly at 2% for the payment of the capacity reserve fee due WPCA in the amount of $17,220 for the Bad Dog Brewery. Property is identified on the assessor's records as 117 Water Street, Property Owner Midland Group, LLC, map block lot 117009007. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. And seconded by Councilman Oliver. Are there questions on the motion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
I have a question, Mayor.
Oh, yes, a question from Councilman Cavanero.
For people like me, what does this actually mean? What, they're paying $17,220 for what exactly?
So that is the, the connection fee. I see Ed Towsey is on the call. Ed, did you want to jump in and talk a little bit about this?
Yes, that's for the capacity reserve fee.
What was the fee base? Was that number based on what metrics were used to arrive at that number?
So, if I might jump in.
Thank you, Mr. Drew is on the call.
Yeah, I can read them. So that, that fee is based upon the change of use of the facility and their additional capacity required in our conveyance and treatment system of the WPCA. So, um, they basically went from 65,000 gallons to, well, I don't have my calculator with me, but I think it was 200 and something thousand, 300,000 gallons increase in their discharge to the sewer system.
Okay. Okay, so it's just a, that's, that's what you use, just that increase as?
Yes, so, so historically, if there's a change of use in a property, you know, 50% of times there's no fee. If it's change of use from, say, you know, office to retail, there's probably not a change of use. And there's change of use, but the, the required capacity that they need to reserve in the system. I think we've gone through this before, you know, we got this pie of 7 million gallons that we have to distribute to all the users. So what's Bad Dog, what Midland Group is requesting is additional capacity above their 65,000 gallons that they were allocated originally. So that instituted the additional fee.
Yep. This is, this is largely to get rid of the mash and all that business?
What's that, sir?
This is, this is largely to get rid of, to, to get rid of their mash? Is that, is that what all this?
Yes, it's, it's, you know, their discharge from, you know, whatever they, you know, discharge into the Santeras Sewer, their brewery waste, their, that brewery wastewater that they're discharging. It is a high-strength waste. We will be monitoring it to see if there's a surcharge applied, but we don't anticipate that. This is to recover, you know, they needed that additional discharge capacity.
Okay, no, no, I get that, Ray, I just want, okay, so you are monitoring it. I was just wondering if that was the best guess number or if they actually know how much they're going to be pushing through the system on a weekly, monthly, yearly basis?
So we go through a process where we evaluate, you know, we look at historical uses. We, we like to find out if, you know, companies like this have other properties in other communities. Can they get us their discharge numbers? And then what we end up doing is we monitor for a three-year period to see if their numbers match what we set it at.
Yep.
If it's significantly different, then we adjust the number. So, you know, this was set at 300 and something thousand, for example. I don't know what the exact number is at this point. And, you know, after a three-year period of monitoring it, if we're, if they're discharging a million gallons, we go back to them and you need to reserve additional capacity because your discharge is significantly greater than what you're allocated.
Understood. No, good answer, thank you, Rick, that's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions for Ray or Ed? All right, hearing none, I'll call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to item number 10. I'll entertain a motion by the city council here in acting as a water pollution control authority to approve the following payment from Fund 490 Santeras Sewer Capital Improvement. This is an invoice to Wright Pierce in the sum of $876.70.
Moved.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanero.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation Council's recommendation and authorize the mayor pursuant to CGS Section 12-179 to release the liens described in Attorney Michelle's memo dated February 16th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Rowett. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated in the list dated February 16th, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Cavanero.
Second.
Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion by the city council acting here and as a WPCA to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refunds indicated on the list dated February 16th, 2021.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. I heard it's Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number 14, I'll entertain a motion or business, open the floor for business by the ordinance subcommittee.
I'll move it.
Councilwoman Rowett.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Rubino, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anything from the budget, I mean, the ordinance subcommittee?
Right now, nothing, Mayor. We're absorbing some information that we received and we'll be talking about it at the next orange subcommittee going forward.
Thank you.
And Vic, Vic, and we just got some paperwork today and we've got to absorb that, too.
Okay.
So there's nothing at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 15, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the business, by the department heads.
Move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. And I heard a second from.
Cavanero.
Just Cavanero, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Department head still on the phone. Mr. Drew, is there anything else you wanted to add this evening?
Nothing additional tonight, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul Cousins, anything from engineering this evening?
Nothing, thank you, Mayor.
I don't see, I think I have all the. Penny, is there anything else you had this evening?
Not at this time, thank you, Mayor.
Uh. Mr. Towsey, anything?
Oh, Mayor, thank you.
And I don't know, Jonathan, is there anything from the city clerk's office?
Nothing here, Mayor, thank you.
Vic, anything from Corporation Council's office?
No, thank you, Mayor.
I think that is everybody. Let's move into item 16. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Rubino, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll start with Councilman Oliver, anything this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Cavanero?
One thing, Mayor, and this may have been covered in a prior meeting and I may have missed it, is that I'm looking for some, just in for general information about the, whatever manufacturer is moving into the stone container building, just who these people are and, you know, what the status of, you know, for purposes of comparison, do we give them a tax abatement? What, you know, how did that all transpire? And is, what does that relate to, anything that's being done, you know, on the Penrose property? Are there any comparisons that we could use?
So, I can do a quick answer that the, the purchaser of the Hendy property, that's a public record, if you were to go on the assessor's records or webpage, you'd see it's Ying Bao LLC. It is a Chinese manufacturing company out of New York. They do manufacture, takeout food containers and silverware. It's my understanding it's biodegradable takeout food containers. At present, we have had a number of meetings with them. We are trying to work with them in regard to the grant funds that we receive to do the cleanup of that property and some further assessment through brownfields. Although we haven't really gotten very far along in that process with them, they have not requested a tax abatement. And this is a manufacturing organization where they are anticipating 100 new jobs, but based on the acquisition of both the stone container and Hendy building, they thought that they might even be able to grow that to exceed the 100 jobs.
Interesting, okay. And then they purchased or leased that building?
Purchased, no, they purchased both buildings, yes.
Okay, so they will be paying taxes at some point, then?
Yes, and the way our tax abatement policies work is it is, it is up to that property developer to ask us for a tax abatement. We don't, as a rule, ask them if they want one.
And they didn't ask, huh?
No.
Very inscrutable, okay.
Yeah.
They will.
I'm always grateful for small favors, yeah.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Rowett, anything this evening?
Nothing, I just saw your testimony as we were speaking in support of the particular bill before finance revenue and bonding. So looked like a good, good bill that the city's supporting with your testimony, so great. I testified for the first time today on this new forum or this new format or platform of Zoom, which was very interesting. They did, you know, allow on the public hearing part of it, which we may want to learn from a little bit, you know, only allowing people to speak when, when necessary. But I know there's been a request to do some further public hearings. Anyway, thought the format was good, but I have nothing else, Mayor. I had my second shot of Moderna today, so I'm a little sore arm, you know, I'm going to whine a little bit, but it's done, I'm done.
Congratulations. No, you know what, I appreciate your, your sharing, your experience with providing testimony. Board of Finance meeting right before this one, there was also a request as we're going through budget to see if there's a way for us to bring back public comment at the beginning of our meetings. I know that it's been a little bit challenging. Last year, obviously, we were all very new at Zoom. I will tell you, last week I was in a cog meeting by Zoom and there was a Zoom bombing and it was most uncomfortable for us. So those are the kinds of things that I just want to make sure that we have the capability to end a meeting or, or curtail that it was most unpleasant, to be honest with you.
But about it, the clerk could cut you off in three minutes, you know, which usually, when you're at the. when you're at the LB, it's, unless the, you know, legislators ask questions, which can bring your testimony a little bit longer, but, you know, they were pretty, pretty on target, and you know.
We're going to give it a try. We're going to see what we can do this year, this, yeah, this budget cycle and give it a try. This particular Zoom bombing, they pretty much hijacked the entire screen. Yeah, Commissioner Dykes from Deep was doing a presentation and had control of the screen, and they hijacked the screen, and it was very, very unpleasant, to be honest with you.
Wow. Scary.
Yeah, yeah. But we'll figure something out so that we're sure that we're reaching people outside of the request that they submit written testimony. But I appreciate your, your sharing, your experience. Mr. Ravino, anything this evening?
Only one question, Mayor. At the, do we own the Armory? Or is that something that's owned by DOD, or how does that work?
Yeah, so we do not own the Armory. It is DAS that actually owns it, the state of Connecticut, and it's, it's managed through the Department of Administrative Services. Right now, as you may be aware, we've allowed Charlotte Hungerford Hospital to be running their vaccination clinic through the Armory. That, of course, was after getting clearance from DAS to allow us to do that. So, grateful for the relationship that we do have with DAS and the state of Connecticut. Obviously, that facility has come in incredibly instrumental through the pandemic. We initially were looking at it to stand up overflow hospital services early in the pandemic, fortunately, did not need those overflow services. But the vaccination clinics are running tremendously efficiently through there, so.
Okay.
And we do pay a dollar a year for that, so.
Yeah, I figured there was some, there was one thing on there.
Maintain it, replaced the, the oil tank there, did the sidewalks around it. We are one hundred percent responsible for minute, maintenance of building. But it is, it is a nice asset. In addition to the critical needs that it's served, also provides recreational opportunities for our kids.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Nothing else, Mayor?
Thank you. Councilwoman Wagner?
Yes. First, I'm happy to hear that we're talking about public, letting the public speak at times. I know it has to be organized well. But I've also been contacted by several people, including our buddy Ray, who I met one day, who said he misses talking to us. But I think if we can allow the public to speak, there have been some concerns in the past. To listen to them is the least we can do, even though we cannot answer them at the time. The other thing is, I was going through the budget that Jonathan sent to me today. I have some questions on that that I'll address at a different time. But are we going to have any budget workshops at all?
So, the budget I do have that I've been working on, a budget calendar that I will be sending out that will set out the whole process between the first week of March and the fifteenth, eighteenth of May. This is a calendar that most of you will be familiar with, it's a calendar I send out every year. I do intend to establish a budget subcommittee. I believe, Councilwoman Wagner, you were appointed to that subcommittee last year. We ended up having to curtail our meetings through executive orders when we were pretty much shut down for the first couple of months of the process. So I am this evening looking for volunteers to serve on that budget subcommittee. And I, I think you, Councilwoman Wagner, mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, I was assuming you did want to be on that.
Happy to help in whatever way I can.
And then it would be.
I'll do it again.
Thank you.
If no one else volunteers.
Good, well, I always try to get a D and an R on these, just so that there's, you know, this balance of, of power and perspective. So, from the Board of Finance, I have board member Lorene Pesky and board member Chris Bayes serving on the subcommittee. From the Board of Safety, I have Commissioner Benedetto, and I'm waiting for confirmation on the second member of the Board of Safety that will serve on that committee. And just to further inform those of you that may be new to the budget process, the budget subcommittee goes through that budget line by line, has an opportunity to meet with the department heads to discuss in detail, you know, what their methodology was for determining that was what they needed in their budget, sort of kick the tires and, you know, and push back. But it also provides us some early reading on where we want to be at the end of the process. I mean, obviously, the cost of running a city and the impact on the mill rate and the ultimate responsibility to taxpayers is one of the important goals that we are always looking at when we're doing these budget deliberations. So, that will take care of the budget question for Councilman.
I'm a little jealous of Ann because I went on to make appointments for Lou and I, but it was before the Armory was available. And I was kicked out of the site several times over two days, but we have our appointments, the first one for February twenty-fourth, so yippie. Other than that, nothing else to report.
Thank you.
Mine's related to work, not my age, of course, but.
We knew, we always knew that, I mean.
I don't act my age, so I don't count it anymore.
And we always knew that you were essential.
Thank you. For a little while.
I stopped counting, I stopped counting at fifty, my kids are catching up with me now.
I have, I have both of mine, and I'm proud to say it's related to my age.
Oh, okay, Vic.
I think, I think I have one more council member to, to check in with. Is Councilman Waldron, did you have anything this evening?
No, nothing for me, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Then I'm just going to, again, share with the council. I did send to you and to the Board of Finance a copy of my testimony that it did provide in relation to Senate Bill eight seventy-three. This is a direct economic impact on the city under the current legislation where state-owned properties and hospital and college properties do receive tax exemption, but under the pilot program, the state has devised a a reimbursement program. And they are supposed to reimburse the municipality forty-five percent of the lost tax revenue for the state-owned property, and I think it's seventy-seven percent for lost revenue in hospitals. In last year and the year before, that revenue would have been somewhere around one point seven million dollars. In fact, what we received was three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, this piece of legislation was the impetus of the twenty-five mayors for the distressed municipalities. That's the city of Torrington and twenty-four others, getting together and writing a letter to the governor and asking that there be implemented a tiered program that identifies the most distressed municipalities in a way to provide some predictable and sustainable financing or funding of these programs. Obviously, one point three million dollars is practically a mill. You know, so out of a forty-six mill rate, that could have reduced our mill rate, or it could have provided additional funding for advancement of education, economic and social growth in the city. So, that's where we were with that legislation. I did receive a copy of the governor's budget and a breakdown of the town-by-town runs. The city of Torrington, as a distressed municipality, was among the twenty-five that would be receiving a one-time additional funding under the governor's proposal. That funding is a combination of federal funds for the stimulus out of the coronavirus stimulus package, and fifty percent of it would be bonded. So, while I'm hopeful that that funding line item stays in the budget, I, I'm not sure that that's, those are usually the ones that become fodder for debate and may end up being sacrificed in the budget. I further would need clarification on that one line item as to what the parameters for the use of that are. You know, with our CR, CRF funding and any of the coronavirus funding, it has to be used in direct response to the virus. And with the bonded for, a portion of that one-time funding, I don't know what those, what those use parameters would be. So, still much work to do on the revenue side of the budget. That's always something that we end up right at the end, you know, May, last week of May, first week of June, before we really have any answers on it. But I'll keep pushing the information out as soon as I have it. For those of you who haven't had a chance yet to get to the Bad Dog Brewery, it's amazing. Salt Two is opening in the former Mertz Building, the Warner Theater property. We have another new restaurant going in on Lower East Main Street. We have a bakery going in in the former Morrison's Building. We have work that Blue House Group is advancing for recommendations. There's some exciting things happening on Main Street in addition to the manufacturing that Councilman Kevin Arrow mentioned earlier. And I'm, I'm hoping, despite the pandemic, although over the weekend I did get an email from another manufacturer who is directly tied to the aerospace industry, is still struggling, struggling to bring back the workforce they had to lay off. I don't know, we're just
Yeah.
doing the best we can to hold everything together for us.
Very excited about the Bad Dog. That was, I don't drink beer, but I'm glad they have Sunset Meadow Winery, or wines there. And excited about the Salt Two.
Yeah.
Good.
It's a great addition to our Main Street.
All right, so if there are no questions for me, and there's no further business before the board, I will entertain motion again.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. And seconded by Councilwoman Wagner, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye, everybody, have a good night.